It's time to reorganize the board for chairperson and vice-chairperson. And at this time, you'll turn the chairmanship over to me. I will take nominations from the board. So, I ask at this point, do we have any nominations for board and chairperson? Yes, sir?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bobby Bearden. I think he's done an excellent job. He's done a great job back in May when he did the typing there. So, I would be humbled by him getting nominated.
Any other nominations? At this time, I'll close the floor of nominations. All in favor of Mr. Bobby Bearden to be chairperson? Oh, I need a motion. Okay, motion for Mr. Bobby Bearden to be chairperson. See, I'm not going to cut out and give the chairperson. I have a motion. End discussion. All in favor? All opposed? This time, I'll turn the meeting back over.
You're going to turn it back to me, aren't you?
So, now you can see the vice-chair.
Do you hear the tier six nomination for last year at this time?
I'd like to make a motion for Louis DeWees.
Okay. Mr. Louis DeWees. I have another nomination. I have a motion for Mr. Louis DeWees to be vice-chair.
Only two months.
Have a second. All in favor?
Okay, now, as per board policy, we need to set the time, place, and date of our board meetings. And, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to throw in there also that work session that we set the time for. It also. And it has traditionally been for our board meetings ever since I can ever remember, the second Thursday of the month at 6:00. And then our work session has been for the last few years on the Tuesday that proceeds to 2nd Thursday at 8:00.
Right. Let me just go the bottom line. Anybody want to change the time? I mean, I'm perfect with the time for most of them.
Good.
Everybody give us that.
I'll take it. What's the motion now?
Here seeks a motion to keep our work session 8:00 on Tuesday morning before our board meeting. And also, our board meeting on Thursday, the 2nd Thursday at 6:00. Is there a motion to that?
You have that much of motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
We will get that in our legal order. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have our agenda today. There were some changes made to your agendas between Tuesday and Thursday. We removed items, we didn't add anything, just based on some of the things that you just didn't have enough information yet to be posted. So, with that said...
One of those being our new construction problem.
Right. We just, we didn't have enough input to Carol Daniel to have a maximum price. And remember what we said. We wanted to send that back and look at trimming some of the cost out of that. I know some counties do that for the fire department. We think we can trim some cost out. Danny talked to us on Tuesday or Wednesday when we had our staff meeting. And they found quite a few ways to take some cost out of it without making it worth it. It will still be a nice building. It will still be a functional building that kids can use. But we need to take our time and do our homework on this so that we can get the best possible deal for the system in Fannin County that we can.
Well, how dramatic would you say when you said more else, though?
Exactly.
I mean, do we have some kind of a timeline that we would kind of like to get going by?
I think that we'll probably be doing it next month or two.
I think so. I just tell them while I go there that I hope to meet with Carol Daniel on Monday. And hopefully, we have as much information as I'm hopeful we have coming in. We possibly could maybe have something for the board next board meeting. We're hoping.
Also, my understanding is there'll be more local people, working people involved in this activity, is changed.
There could be some local people in some facets of the work, you know. As far as that, let me say this, that is up to, because we've had some that wanted to do some. And when I'm talking, I'm talking on like the grading and stuff on the big project. And that is strictly up to Carol Daniel's. They're the CM. It's whether they want to let that back out. And they can choose to or not to let that back out. And some of the stuff that they feel that it's the best advantage for Fannin County Board of Education to not let back out because of the price, then they will let it back out.
But we are looking at local. And we're looking at them being cheaper.
That's right.
And so, yeah, so here's what I'll say. I know we all want to get this thing started. And we all want this building to be in place. But this is a big investment. It's going to be a building that we're going to have for a long, long time. Longer than all of us, so. So, we need to make sure, like we generally do, if we're doing it, we pay attention to detail and we get this right. And here's the great thing about this. We know that we don't have any bond in any of this. And we know that the law school system's had to borrow money up front on a project this large. Me and Susan and Danny have sit down and figured out that we're not going to have to do any of that. But each month that we sharpen our pencils and fine-tune these plans is another month that SLOSS comes in and loosens that cash for just a little bit more for us. So that we don't have to cut everybody else out of their projects on down the line to get this built. So, I get it. I'm impatient, too. I'd love to see this thing up. But at the same time, we need to do it right. We need to do it a cost-effective manner. And it's an advantage not to be out there spending money right now because we're putting the money that's coming in in a bad way.
Mark, let me explain it just a little bit where everybody will understand the grading package. When you got the grading package, in Fannin County, our construction manager has it at 1.4 million. And our closest bidder to that was 1.8 million. Then we had somebody locally that was a little above that. They were the third bidder at over 1.8 million. Then, you see, we're saying they do not want to open that bid because that fella has done left over $400,000 on the table.
And that other grading company's had transport equipment up here, too, Fannin. And several things. They've cut the price there. I, you know, I understand using local, I really do. And I understand using local people. But when you're talking $400,000, $500,000 to taxpayers back in county. And you're the closest person there. I have a problem with that.
I do, too.
The bid needed to win in back when they did that. If they wanted it, if they were in Fannin County and they wanted that, that bid needed to have been down there, you know, instead of $400,000, $500,000 away.
You know, I love putting money back in the local economy. And I love working people in Fannin County. Same time, part of the reason that I'm here and why y'all are charging me with is to be sure that we're going to sue our taxpayer. $400,000 just to have somebody local in, I'm not seeing that.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for your patience. I think, I hope it'll be worth it. I think it will be. Thank y'all.
So, anyway, we need to approve the agenda, Mark. Approve the minutes.
Tuesday minutes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Paul.
I thought you were forgetting we have that.
Yeah. And we had Tuesday minutes that I asked y'all to look at before we got here. So, with that said, I need to recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Does Karen have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So, move.
I'll say that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's over the call.
Do we have anyone who would like to speak to the board's thinking? Would like to let you speak?
Oh, let me say this. I appreciate everybody being here this evening. I forgot to do that. It's open. But I appreciate everybody being here.
Do we have anybody to...
Financial report. I am proud of this financial report. If you remember, we told you we were going to build a budget that might actually go into the red, that we would draw out reserves. And we were actually over budget the previous two months because of the 3% one-time bonus that we paid our, all of our school employees. So, now, if you look at this financial for November, I am proud to say that we have collected 20% versus 18% of our local sources for this time last year. Our total revenues are standing at 29% versus 28% for this time last year. Total expenditure is 41% versus 41%. And here's the good news. We completed 41.66% of the fiscal year, which means we're under budget and back on track, even though we thought we might be in reserve. So, so far, keep your fingers crossed. We're not going to brag and say we'll end up that way. Right now, we're running good. So, this is a good financial report. And I would ask, more approve it, ask president, Mr. Chairman.
Do we present, recommend we approve financials? Red, do you have a motion for that?
I'll make that a motion.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, let's look at SLOSS. This is November SLOSS. It's $416,898.98. That blew the other two, or the other three counties' union town, not towns, union, union pickets away as far as what collection is. Uh, when we're pulling in money like that every month, we're putting that in the money. And that's just going to make that egg bar and that much easier to bring out of the ground. I am very proud of the efforts that this community makes to draw people to a very prosperous community. And we are reaping the benefits of that. Our Chamber of Commerce works extremely hard. They've done a pretty good, what we call a Chamber Queen, or Frances, or what, but she does a good job. So, we are proud of them. We are on track right now to collect $24,244,818.80. I'm telling you, we're getting close to that number that we set of 27,500, 500,000. So, keep our fingers crossed. Uh, we don't have to approve that. Oh, I've said this a bunch of times tonight, and I'm going to say it again. How much debt do we owe on this?
Zero.
Zero. The county school system has zero debts in all of its camps.
Ms. Paine is the guardian of the gold in the business.
I'm my best.
Uh, da-da-da-da-da.
Not y'all.
Five-year plan. I'm going to let, y'all know, y'all been here a long time, Chad's in major, so he knows about these things. You have five-year facility plans that the state requires, and they give you a little bit of money to work on projects along. It is about that time for us. And I'm going to let Mr. Chairman Paul speak briefly.
Hi, I was on here, wasn't it? Now, this here is just the five-year we're talking about tonight. We will get back to the five-year plan on all of our schools, but we're just specifically talking about the middle school tonight and its needs. And we have visited Mr. Knuckles out there and Doug Fields, and we met with his group. And this, the printout we got here, this page six of eight right here, it kind of tells what we're looking at there and the need of science rooms at the middle school. And we've got here enlarging existing five classrooms to meet the DOE space requirements for science labs. These science labs need to be the thousand square feet. And we are looking at taking class combinations of 20, classroom 20 and 22, nine and 11, one and two, 10 and 12, and five and six. And by doing that, by taking them classrooms and joining them together, we will meet that space. And then, we will take at a later date, and then we can, we will look at doing a winging out there. And then, we will replace the classrooms that has been taken up, which four. And then, we will need three more science rooms to finish it up with. And then, that will give us our science rooms that we need at the middle school. So, this is something that has been in the making for a long time for the middle school and something that they're short on in the middle school. We looked at their numbers today. They are not coming down. They are in growth for the next five years. Their numbers are going up. So, they're, you know, so they're going to, they're going to need rooms. So, that's something that we're asking y'all to look at here. This is something that's not, we talked to Steve McHugh, we talked to Doug Fields, we talked to Doug Suits for the DOE. And this is something that's going to take quite a bit of planning. It's not going to happen probably in a year or two years. But it's something, we got to get it into the planning stages. So, we're wanting y'all's approval to get this over into the five-year plan. And when we come back with a five-year plan, it'll have it in it, and then we'll have the whole five years for all the schools. But for right now, this, this middle school, we're wanting to get this over in it tonight and get it voted on to y'all.
I'm going to tell you, I sat down with...
Doug and me.
And when I came over here, Mr. Chairman, in 2000, we had some rough plans to put some science rooms on that middle school. And nobody could, because of the way that the teams work and halls work on it, nobody could ever come up with a practical solution. So, that's languished now for 17 years. We need to upgrade the science rooms in that building, especially since we want to be a still middle school. That needs to be done. It needed to be done. And when they brought that in and showed it to me, it's like sometimes the simplest solutions are the hardest to find. We've looked for a solution for 17 years on these science rooms over there. And what I saw on Wednesday, when they brought it in, Tuesday, when they brought it in, I can't remember which day it was, it thrilled me because it is the solution. So, I would proudly recommend that the board adopt this five-year plan, state facility plan for the middle school at this point.
Okay. Do you have a motion to adopt a five-year plan for Fannin Middle School?
You have that motion.
Have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion? I've got a question or two. You mentioned building another wing off of there. Where would that be at?
Well, it's not, it's not been predetermined. When Steve McHugh was up with us, we looked at it. And we looked at where the trailer's at. We looked at coming down that way. And we also looked at coming straight across the road from the flagpole, that big old island down through there. They looked at them two spots right there.
Middle school's great building. It's a very small building, but the layout of it, it's hard to modify.
As far as attaching on to any of the wings, you know, the way it's made and all, you've got two wings. It's real close to the bank right there. You couldn't hardly get anything to mount to, but you couldn't get on to the wings back there. But that was the two areas that give the most promise for, you know, for a wing, was right there.
This, this won't potentially have anything like out-of-dee spending there where they have to have to come outside and come back in?
It, it will possibly be a, it will possibly be a catwalk back to the building.
For fire reasons, a lot of times, you can't, you can't attach to the existing structure.
Exactly. I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, that is, I'm going to tell you something. Just be afraid of your pain at the high end with fire because they'll not let you do it anyway. That's the whole reason that expansion is that way.
Because of the distance that the engine doors...
Well, I know it's a fire break, actually, to not attach it to that building.
Like that out-of-dee spending where they've got the two walls?
Not this.
I got one more question. I hope I'm on that line.
You were fine.
How about the media center?
The media center?
Does it not need to be expanded?
No, it falls within the, we looked at the square footage, it falls within the...
It falls within the...
Okay. I didn't go out there major.
See, I've heard that for years, that if we, if we build on that building, that we'd have to increase the media capacity. Danny has figured it, and he's had the people from state come in and look at it. We're good there.
Okay. I'm just throwing things out since we're in middle school.
That's fine.
Any more comment? All in favor?
Next is approve our, oops. Everybody raise your hand again, who's in favor.
I have a second.
Basketball games or events up here, I've gone to pep rallies, you can't hear a thing in that gym. It's just like a, it's just like a big wall of sound, I suppose. But one of the backup plans that we've always had for graduation is that if it rains, we'll have graduation in the gym. I would be a disappointed mom or dad if I had graduation in there. You don't have a little hearing thing. So, we had, I charged Danny with upgrading the sound for that, and Danny's a wise man. And he went to our master of sound, Eldon Moats. And Eldon sat down with his company and came up with this plan. And he talked to me about it today. He thinks it's good. There's actually one button that people would use. If you're going to have a ball game, you hit the button game, that turns on everything and sets the levels you need. If you're going to have a performance, there's another button you mash, and all that. I think this is a good thing because it is $2,219 over my spending limit. I need to bring it to the board to ask for approval for this. So, with that said, I make the recommendation that we approve the VB audio and video quote for an upgraded sound system within our Fannin County High School gym. And this is to be paid out of SLOSS.
In reference to Mr. McKenzie's statement, the chair seeks a motion to gun to go this project. And I'd like, since I've had people from all the years to make that motion. Every time I turn around, somebody's asking me about that, asking me about that. So, I'd like to make the motion. I need to say that.
I'll make the second with a comment. I'm astonished that it can be that amount. What's being, what is being done?
What's that?
What, what does this entail?
It tells, it's got some speakers to go with it. It's got some...
So, it's not...
Processor and some...
Not in the building? There's acoustic, it's not changing the...
No.
No.
Well, will it not change the fixtures? Will it not make it more...
Well, well, we, yeah, on the acoustics, we put panels in there. We put panels, we upgraded the gym with sound panels here far back.
I forgot that.
We did.
That was the first phase. This is the second. I forgot that.
You know, because trying to help the situation in there. So, this, this here should do very well now that we've got that.
Those were the baffles that distorted the sound, and this will...
Right. But I talked extensively with Mr. Moats about this system. And he went into Lentz to try to get something that would work well for the gym, that would nobody be munking with. And when you, like I said, when you, when you push it for what you want it for, then there's nobody setting volumes up, blowing speakers up, and doing all that. And you just set it, and it's ready to go for what you're using it for. If it's a ball game, or if it's a performance, whatever, it would be ready to go.
Yes, sir. If you scroll down, the specifics are included in the report. It includes amplifiers, dollar speakers, and advanced controller. That controller is what we're excited about. Where we did a lot of damage is when you get a person running the sound system. It might not be the person who's trained for it, but we lose a lot of equipment that way. This is pretty much full of it. Absolutely. It's considered a upgrade on the speaker as well.
Any other comment?
I've got agree with the chairman. In my six years on this board, that's probably been one thing I've heard a lot about. Not only from the public, but from administration, too. So, I think it's time that we took care of this.
I agree. And, you know, if this, if it needs tweaking from this, it should work.
All in favor? I understand, man.
All right. And as always, Ms. Walton has the agenda item of local board training.
Good evening. We talked on Tuesday that it's time to plan dates for your local board trainings. We had a discussion on Tuesday whether there will be three trainings or four trainings. So, what we'd like to do tonight is discuss the ones that you've selected. Pick the three that you would like to do definitely. And if the fourth one is required, then we can do that one as well. This must be completed by June 30th. What we've done the past year, or maybe year and a half, is tie the board training either to a work session or a board meeting night. That's still an option. There's an option of if you wanted to do one on a Tuesday and an additional one on a Thursday, that's an option. So, we have, we have a lot of opportunities to get this in, but yet, in some ways, it seems like the timeline is short. The ones that you selected, that's not the most recent, that's 2015, 16. That's not the most recent one. The 16, 17. The ones that you selected were board building, which is going to talk about your individual strengths and your strengths as a board. And I know that Mr. Bearden was the one who mentioned that he wanted to do that. That one's entirely new. The board has not participated in that. But how do you work individually? And how do you work with the strength? Each of you have to come together to work for the betterment of the school system. Another one is the legal issues that you always like to participate in after the session is over. Planning for boards of education, I know is broad, but that's one that Pioneer can bring a lot of just topics of interest to you. What might be a hot topic of the, of the year, or the, or the season that you'd like to discuss. The last one is board roles and responsibilities. I know that we do that one each time. I might put that one as your last choice, simply because I know that Mr. Galloway has already participated in the new member training. And that had a lot to do with board roles and responsibilities. So, if you'd like to look at those other three, we could do that. I jotted down dates. February, the work session is the 7th. The meeting is the 9th. If that's something you're interested in. March, we have March 7 and 9. April 11 and 13. May 9 and 11. June 6 and 8. If you would like for me to get these dates to you, I can. And then, if you would like to look at those on your own and see if there's something that will not work. If you choose to select an entirely different date, that's fine, too. I'm here to do what the board wants, and I will relay that to Pioneer. And they always do everything they can to provide the training on the date that you prefer. So, if anyone, yes, Mr. DeWees?
Teresa led us last year. It was sort of like open discussion.
Yes.
We covered a bunch of topics.
Yes.
I thought it was really good.
That's what I think number 10 is. I think that would be good for that type of discussion.
And they can gear these in that direction, knowing that they can share information, but also give you an opportunity to discuss as a board how you would, how you would like to learn more about the topic, or what kind of discussion you would like to have. So, you know, if you have dates that you know are just not going to work for you, that's entirely fine. Or if you have definite preferences, I would be glad to work with them.
Let me ask this question. Is it possible for you to get all the dates to us?
Yes.
Let us look at them and maybe have a date to get back with you. So, if we decide to do one, maybe on a Tuesday or Thursday, we can do that next month?
Definitely. I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, so you're charging them with coming up with dates and coming up with topics?
I'm charging them with just taking the dates that I've seen and letting me know if those dates are good dates, or they're not, and the three topics that we advise.
We might come up with topics tonight.
Well, you've got your topics. You've got your three.
Yeah.
And then, we can, we can go from, we can go from there. That's up to you.
But I'm like Mr. DeWees. I like that one more, that we have kind of an open discussion. And we, to me, we can learn a lot more like that than if just somebody talked to us.
I agree.
And the legal issues is one of the things.
The legal issues is one that you'd like to do in the past, but we wait until the session is over before we have that, that particular...
Well, actually, we've worked in our time frame.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I think that's, I think that's always good.
Actually, when we used to go to Marietta to do our workshops, they always covered something that was different from last year to this year. So, that's always good. It would cover something that might have changed from last year to this year.
But I'll get these... Okay, then I'll get these dates and topics to you and then we, and we'll go from there. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Chairman, his personnel, I will get the board in a minute to look over the personnel sheet, it has changed slightly. Excuse me, let's see what, what was our differences?
Uh, these are subs, if you're willing to just get on with today, and we kind of got a little behind when it goes, I interviewed on Friday and then, did the, being out for two days and then get background checks and stuff, but they got free days, so that's why we were kind of late putting them on, because they did not get, so these are substitute teachers, uh, bus drivers, couple of bus drivers, and, uh, one of them is, uh, well, a couple more, sort of five teachers who will be able to be long-term teachers for us, uh, if we need them. And then I think Kenny had nutrition, so, these are just for subs.
Okay.
Transportation, transportation subs too, right?
Yes, there's a couple.
Major full-time driver. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yes.
I'll just go through and ask, Mr. Dan, were you good?
Oh, I'm good, I'm fine.
Good.
I'm good.
Good enough round?
Fine.
Okay, we're good.
All right, so first, my recommendations for full-time bus drivers, Sean Kethley and Dennis Turner.
Chair, takes a motion to hire these personnel in transportation.
You have that motion.
I'm second.
Second.
All in favor?
Substitute nutrition, Holly Cherie Devonport and Terry Jill Paulson.
Chair have a motion to hire these people in substitute nutrition? I'll second. All in favor?
Okay, I don't know if y'all know this guy or not, but substitute custodian, Daniel Van Brown.
Well, you're familiar.
Yeah, because you retired on-
I think a motion to hire substitute custodian?
I'll make that motion.
I'm second.
I'll second their motion.
Any all in favor?
And substitute teacher list, Ashley Brisbane, Charity Kenny, Kennedy, Whitley Motters, Sarah Seaver and Robin Shorty Tompkins, I got that right.
Chair have a motion to hire these substitute teachers?
So moved.
I'm second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah, time for my comments. Uh, you know, last month, we said goodbye to a dear friend, Sandra Seager, and this month, we welcome a new friend, the one that I hate to say that I taught. You know, it shocked me the first time I had a, had a student that I taught get a job in the school system, uh, and then it, you know, it shocked me when somebody might become a principal or something that I taught. My first board member that I taught was a real shocker to me, but I've been impressed with, uh, Mr. Galloway's, that affection of this board since the day he was elected, he's attended every, uh, he has stuck in there through some, I know some pretty, uh, interesting training, I suppose, you would say. He's, he has been trained to within the edge of his life, uh, and has to have more. Uh, you know, board members are special people, folks, uh, they don't do this job for money, they do it because of their love of the kids, love of the community, because there's not much of a financial reward for being a school board. So, I commend you, Chad, uh, for, uh, running the race and spending four years with us. Anybody who does it, does it out of love, heart, and I can say that proudly about, about this board. I will, I will say this again, I am so proud to have this board at this table. We had a real chance for a big change in our board, we could have had three members to quickly turn over on this board. That did not happen and I tickled that because the success of this Fannie County student system flows directly from the board that supports employees, supports children, that supports the community. And y'all, y'all walk a, a balancing wire to make this thing happen and be a drug on this side by people who don't want us to spend money, or be a drug on this side by people who want us to give their children the best education possible. It's a real balance act. People like to look at county politics and they like to look at the commissioners and stuff, and I know their jobs are hard, I think y'all's hard, uh, so for that, I say thank you. Uh, this school system's getting ready to go through a transition and here's what I believe about this school system. This school system always looks out for the good of its employees and the good of the children. And no matter how this system turns out in the next few months, I know that we're gonna have people who are gonna come back out and work as hard as they can. Uh, and they are here first and foremost, not for their ego, but for the children. And that's what we all have to keep in mind as we move through all of this. So, I am looking forward to my last six months with this school system. I have enjoyed my time with it and I truly enjoy the people I work with. They're all my friends, all my family. Uh, and with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'll take my-
Six months?
Six, well, a little under six now.
You got time to have another. No, thank you, I appreciate you. I want to thank the principals, you guys come out to these board meetings and I do appreciate it, I know the other board members do too, so, I know you've got a lot of things going on and you could be somewhere else, but I do appreciate you guys coming out tonight, I do. Mr. Galloway, welcome. This is, it's a privilege to be on this board from my perspective and I think you feel the same way a few times, so, that's about all I've got to say.
We'll do a second on Steve's comment. And I'd like to thank those advocates, those letters of intent. That shows our county cares about kids, the letter of intent is a, is a good, a good name for it, I guess. To thank y'all, y'all are close enough to the work to realize what you're investing for and you still want the challenge, and I suspect it's because you want to do as Mr. Henson's did, help our system, bless Dan and Ken, and most of all, help our kids and that's what it's all about, so, I'm very proud and thankful that we have y'all's advocates. Now-
Let me say first, I, I did count this as a great honor and great privilege, you know, I do thank you for the opportunity and I do love the community and the kids, they mean a great deal to me. Transition coming in here has been wonderful, I want to say thank you, especially you, I agree, it's absolutely wonderful, you've been involved, the things you did and had to tell us, you did include me, just like I was in the world, I appreciate that same deal. I'm sure that's it, uh, the whole board office itself has been absolutely wonderful and I thank you for that, the principals, anything I've asked or even remotely hinted at, y'all have dug and found, which show that you, you know, love them beyond that when I ask you a question.
Y'all have a crack.
Right. And I do appreciate that. Dean, absolutely, thank you for all your help, uh, I don't even get calls from you from different things and I appreciate it, it is a privilege and an honor, I think.
As always, it's an honor to be a part of the team, central office personnel are outstanding. All five of our principals are here tonight and I can't compliment you enough, you set the standards high, you respect the schools and lead the teams, you have made us very, very proud. In fact, you've made us look very good, thank you for that, thank you all, all of you that are here tonight.
Well, I ain't gonna add too much to that, anyhow, I do want to plug one thing though. I was thrilled as I was at the middle school the other day, uh, taking my granddaughter's school and running into Travis Norton. And he said, if you got a minute, I'd like to show you something. And I said, I've got a minute, so we went around over to the baseball field and pressed ball. And he said, you've got to go upstairs and look at what we've done. And I said, he had ladders going up to there and I said, I don't know where to find that thing, man, I got two bad knees. He said, I'll put you up in there sometime. So, I climbed the ladder and got up in there. And they've done a wonderful job on transforming that to a locker room so the boys can have a place to change. They still got room to do their broadcasting and stuff like that out over the field, uh, sis-in-law home, dedicate, I mean, not dedicated, but donated the wood and stuff that they did inside with, so, if any of you have a change, and baseball starts in February, if I'm not wrong, ain't that right? Baseball starts in February?
Right, it's coming up soon.
Everybody be here tonight and, uh, get over all that stay here. Anybody else got any?
Two, yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm second.